Six thirty, call the meeting to order, ask clerk take a roll.
Mordini.
Here.
Sarchet.
Here.
Lane.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
DeBorak.
Here.
First item on the agenda is approval of the agenda, I have no motions or additions, correction, I take a motion.
Don't move.
Second.
Call call.
Sarchet. Lane.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
DeBorak.
Yes.
Mordini.
Yes.
Motion carries, next item is public comments, it's time and place for anyone in the audience who wishes to address any other item other than those on a public hearing. And then moving on to item five, consent agenda. Motion.
Second.
Call call.
Lane.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
DeBorak.
Yes.
Mordini.
Yes.
Sarchet.
Yes.
Motion carries, next item is new business, under new business action item one, consider motion to approve resolution two thousand seventeen eighty-five ordering construction of certain public improvements for East Vista Lake Avenue twenty seventeen extension project and fixing dates for a public hearing thereon September twenty-fifth two thousand seventeen at six thirty P.M. and the taking of bids, take a motion.
Don't move.
Second.
Call call please.
DeBorak.
Yes.
Mordini.
Yes.
Sarchet.
Yes.
Lane.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Motion carries, next item is consider motion to approve resolution two thousand seventeen eighty-eight approving an amended site plan for West Elementary slash North Polk Community School District, we'd like to speak to this.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members, my name is Mark McMurran with Abakai Consulting, one-on-one Northeast Circle Drive, Grand's Iowa, I am the professional engineer designing this project, with me tonight is Kevin Strommer with Ethos Group from here in Polk City and planning and zoning commission thoroughly reviewed this project and gave it their recommendation, I'm here to answer any questions you want, if you want I can go ahead and brief you on those changes.
Take those.
Okay. So during the original site plan design process, there was discussion as to what to do with the existing hard surface playground which was in this vicinity and then there was a playground set that was right in this vicinity that was going to be too close to the buildings and so and then this swing set and we also had discussion as to possibly routing a fire lane around the building, so all that discussion went on and on back and forth several iterations and one of the things that the principal at this building had insisted on was having this playground which is for older children over toward this side, so the previous iteration had the hard surface playground moved north a little bit and then the that playground was just moved over into just a little bit to the west into this area and the swing set because of that fire access lane was moved up here on the north side, so then we the school decided to sprinkle the building, so which eliminated the need for the fire access lane and then at the sort of the last minute after it had been through the process here, the principal decided well she was okay with moving the playground equipment for the older children off over into this vicinity because we determined that eventually it was going to have to be moved whenever they built this next lane, so rather than pay to have it moved now and then pay to have it moved again in X number of years, they decided to go ahead and locate it over there and deal with the logistics of having the older children over there and then we went ahead and moved the playground to the south because the soccer proponents really wanted to keep their soccer fields, they had two soccer fields a little bit different configuration or layout than this, but they wanted to keep those, so we moved that south and then modified the stormwater engine base and that's it in a nutshell, so any other questions?
I think probably the bigger issue and what raised the issue for the need to have the site plan come back through P and Z which got in your hands and clearly in mine and other from the staff perspective was the removal of a number of trees that were not initially on the site plant that was approved by council that was agreed to between I know myself and Randy Carroll and myself and Dr. Mark and the letter that went out to the residents of the community and said that they were going to be there and so when construction started up there and they basically in one day came and took out a whole bunch of you know very old trees that were not part of that, that was shocking to say the least and clearly led to a lot of communication back and forth between us, the school and the residents up there.
Sure.
So I think that's disappointing, I'll just say, that it happened that way, but there's nothing that we can do about it now with the trees already being out.
Disappointing is being nice, how did that even happen? I mean we go through a site plan that's been established for six months and I appreciate you going through the history of leading up to that site plan and I would characterize it differently on how we got to that point, but nonetheless we had one and then you just go in and clear cut trees, I don't understand how that happens.
Kevin, you know it wasn't something I wanted to do, I mean it wasn't something that I said hey let's go.
Somebody had to say to do this.
I think that's a cheap way out, I mean you don't, it's not your fault, you just happen to be the one here talking like it, as we've learned in the past, there's what North Polk school says and what North Polk school does, nobody else wants to address the elephant in the closet here, so you know me, I'm willing to do that, but somebody just didn't show up there on a chainsaw one day and do this without direction, I think that's very, very, very sad and it doesn't speak very favorably for the school either.
I sit on the school board and to this day I still have not.
Joe, can you just give your name and address?
Joe, nineteen forty-five Lake Avenue, Polk City.
Thanks Joe.
I sit on the school board and still to this day I've not received any formal communication either from the architect contractor as to exactly what went on and I got pulled over in the hallway to get the middle school back to school and I want to know what's going on, I said I'm going to the city council to try to find out because it's the school district and the city council have a black eye on this whole thing and some people are not taking stand up and saying you know what, we screwed up, I still to this day still think there should have been some type of communication to the neighboring adjacent homeowners to explain where the screw up was at and actually I might wish it just the fact that the whole every household in the district gets a letter to find explaining what the heck went on because we did not approve that.
Well and just I wanted to me it's I appreciate you being here Joe because.
It's not, I'm not shooting you guys.
No, and I don't, none of my questioning is directed at you and I don't advise if it's directed at you or even you with Ethos, but you had another member of your group come here and quite honestly very condescendingly tell us how to do our job and what was going to happen and all these things and then we go through a process and drug him honestly kicking and screaming into a good plan from a pretty bad one that was over there and we got to a good compromise and then somebody just decided to go willy-nilly and take down a bunch of trees and move around, I mean there's four things on here that were off from the site plan that we didn't follow through and I just don't know that happens, I mean what do we have for if we're not going to follow?
I'll just respond a little bit to that, my name is Kevin Strommer, I'm with Ethos Design Group, sort of the whole process just before we published the construction documents, from the time we submitted the first plan, site plan to that time, there were a lot of changes that were happening to the site plan like Mark talked about with the fire access lane, I had a sprinkler system and then late game changer was to try to hang on to those soccer fields, so there was a lot of people who were trying to please.
Can I ask a question, whose direction was it to hang on to the soccer fields?
It was the school district's direction and we submitted a plan, a site plan with Randy Carroll, we worked through that and Ann, the principal there, we had a couple different layouts, you know where to put those, we emailed them plans, we talked about and they approved the location of the soccer fields and also the playground equipment.
Now, just from a timeline perspective, was that before or after they made it through P and the plans made it through P and Z and made it to council and got the approval?
It was after P and Z and it was about a week before we published construction documents and submitted the construction documents to the city.
Nice to see where the priorities lay.
So where was that in line with when the bond referendum happened and what I'm trying to get to the bottom of is that I and again I helped wordsmith it, there was a letter that went out from Dr. Martin myself that assured the property owners that there was going to be this row of trees and other things and we were doing away with the fire lane and we were going to sprinkle the building and I think the big piece of that was that we were going to sprinkle the building because when I went up to a meeting, Joe, I think you may have been there, I don't remember it, when we went up to the meeting at the elementary school in order to try and promote this, help push this project through because it's needed and I mean I think that that's the gray area, this is a needed project. We went to that meeting and it was clear in talking to the residents up there, especially the residents who live along West Side Drive to the south side of that property, that they did not like that fire lane option that was going to be there and it was clear there were some people even within your business organization that wanted to dig their heels in and say that we're going to continue to do that, we're not because the sprinkler system was going to be too much money, it was after the meeting was over with the residents up there that then I sat down with him, Randy Carroll, principal of the school and others and said let's come up to, let's find an agreement here and we were able to that night come up with an agreement that then made a pact with, so what I'm trying to find out from a timeline perspective is when did all of this stuff change?
It was literally a week before the bond referendum passed and the construction documents were issued, it was we issued the construction documents, we submitted them the day after the bond referendum was approved.
Which was after we had already approved the plans?
Correct.
Okay.
I don't remember the time and I don't remember how long it was in between the first and middle and the construction documents.
So that was again February and it's August.
And I would also just like to add that, I mean we're not taking trees down for no reason, obviously it's for the benefit of the school district, that's why it was the ultimate solution, the ultimate plan, it's just a matter of construction, I mean we need to add square footage to this building and in order to do it, we have to have construction access lane, in order to have construction access lane, we got to take some trees down, those are the larger ones, the older ones that we're talking about, I think.
But that wasn't on the site plan.
Correct, it wasn't on the first site plan.
That's what's frustrating about it, what are we going to say, at this point, they're gone.
I understand, it was a mistake, absolutely.
And then I'd ask you to write in the check.
I think.
What we're in.
What we should have done, what we didn't do is when we submitted the construction documents to the city, those plans went over to safe buildings and then there was no plans that were then submitted to Snyder and Associates and that's what should have happened, the second set of plans should have went to them for the approval of the construction documents, so I think that's what got overlooked and there should have been a narrative saying, you know, these are the changes to the site plan and that didn't happen and our design team takes responsibility for that not being done.
Kathleen, what do you have to add to this?
Yeah, I mean I wasn't aware that there was a change to the site plan after it was approved, which the approval included the plans that already had the fire lane done, so that was by the time it went finally approved, the agreement regarding the sprinkling and the fire lane and I wasn't aware of anything until I got a call from Gary saying, hey, I'm getting calls about the trees, do you know anything about it and I hadn't seen anything, so I guess I had nothing to add.
I know, just checked, see Ron.
I just want to say that we all know the school store they need it.
Yep.
Here in Polk City, we know that's unavoidable, we know down the road there's probably going to be more and I think the work that Joe and Jason put in with the school district and city meeting coming to meet a compromise was a big step in the right direction and I would hate to see that all go out the window now because I know there's going to be other incidents down the road where we're going to have to work together and I thought we were doing, I was very proud to hear that that compromise was reached, I was proud of the school board and proud of the city that we could reach those compromises and now we're gonna, we're kind of gonna go into it with a little different attitude next time and that's a shame because as I've heard many, many times, it's for the kids.
But explain to me how the school, how is the school board responsible for that?
I don't think they are.
That's what I mean, I don't think it's, the ball is not dropped by the school board, the Joe ball was dropped, with all due respect with your firm.
Sure, what was your name again, I'm sorry. Kevin Strommer. I'm very sorry for the position that you're put in, but I don't think I've ever seen a bigger indictment on a firm's communication with someone developing it, the school board, than the school board feeling it necessary to come here to find out what's going on.
I would like to make sure it's known that our contact at the school district is administration and so administration was fully aware of, I mean the process that we went through and there was a lot of things going on, so it was easy, very easily to overlook, I overlooked the fact that these additional trees were being removed, I mean I had, I don't know how many pages of drawings that I was responsible for reviewing and making sure that everything, I mean everybody's aware of what's going on.
So the administration was aware then?
Yes, well they were aware that we were relocating the soccer fields, they were aware that additional trees had to come out, I don't know that they knew the extent, I mean I didn't know the extent of some of these trees that additionally had to come out, I know that we tried to save a couple of the larger trees the first time we sort of redid the drawings, but just a matter of having that construction access lane, there was really no way of getting around having that construction access lane, weren't able to, weren't able to hang on to unfortunately.
Shouldn't that have been figured out in the beginning?
Yeah, I mean.
I don't, I want to hold this whole thing up, but this does not sit well saying that it was administration's call, Dan Martin didn't know about it.
I would echo that with you Joe, at least in my conversations with Dan.
That is so far from the truth.
So then who did this?
Dan does an excellent job communicating with the board if something, if there's a snag, always does, I sure in heck should think, hey, we went against our site plan, I think that probably would have been, seven fifty-eight in the morning you would have sent that email out.
And Joe, I'd echo your comments as well because I've had a number of communications with Dan and Ron to echo your comments because we've been trying to improve that communication between the two.
They're doing a great job.
And in this particular case, Joe, I know you and I spoke to this and I know I spoke to Dan about this, that my fear is, is that something like this would potentially erode some of the work that we've done in the last four years that I'm very proud of and this is out of our control, you know, and it's very frustrating that there was a letter that was written, sent out to the district, signed by me as well as Dan Martin, fully in support of this, only to find out that now this has changed, disappointing.
No, I understand completely, yes.
And personally, it really irked me a lot when I was getting a number of the calls that I was getting and I know staff was as well, so.
But it is needed.
But it is needed and there's nothing, you know, what as P and Z said, what can we do, they couldn't, I mean they, you know, it's a needed thing and what are you going to do?
I know if I were sitting in Joe's seat, I'd be looking for ways to pay for what I got rather than what I was promised, but.
I don't agree with the what can you do because you have developers out here tonight that are looking to get a project approved, so if we go with that attitude, if any of these developers think, well, we'll just make some changes after they approve it and we'll take it back because after all they let the school board go forward without following their plan, now I even say school board lightly. What is very disheartening is, and we're going to play history lessons here, as you remember on our bond issues, there were some very hard feelings in Polk City about the lack of information and inaccurate information put out when we built our high school, flash forward, we have great working relationship recently, which is excellent, best since I've been here by far, even though we're getting emails from another school board member that is either not or shown to be against saying vote against everything Polk City does, your counterpart, we put that behind us and we move forward and now we have somebody here trying to play a sleight of hand, I don't care, it obviously isn't the school board issue on this, but to me unless somebody's going to come up and say, you know, we didn't just try to play hide the, you know, somebody needs to make it right or I don't think you move forward, if that's the case, why should these developers follow their P and Z recommendations? And to say it's Dan Martin's fault, I don't believe.
No.
To say it's not our fault, don't really care, I want to know whose fault it is and if not, why are we even paid to have P and Z, I mean or any of our.
And like I said.
It's crazy to think you just say, oh, that's too bad, we need it, it's absolutely unexcusable.
And if I said that, I didn't mean to, and I told you, I mean we take responsibility of overlooking this, overlooking the communication with the school board.
Well then I guess what I want to know, if it's your responsibility, how are you going to fix it?
I guess we can, we've spoken with the district and we're willing to appease, I mean whatever the council wants to do to make the neighbors happy, I know we've already made the mistakes so far, so we're going to amend it as best we can, another thing I just would like to make everyone know is that by no means we're trying to be sneaky about this middle, I mean there's literally, there's so many moving pieces, we didn't only have this project that we're pushing through, we're also pushing the middle school and there was just a lot of things happening.
Well, if that's something that's out of your control and you can't stay on top of it, then maybe you shouldn't be doing it. So the thing that they did put in here and I know Joe, you and I spoke to this as well, so I'm going to pitch on the spot, but I'm going to, was that they were talking about potentially adding, I think P and Z's recommendation was to add forty arborvitae trees on the west side of the property, am I correct when I say that?
Yes.
Okay, arborvitae is not the answer up there for those homeowners, that's not what was taken out and that's not what should be put back and I think we need to be very clear about that, I don't know what the answer is because I'm not a tree expert, I know somebody who is, but that's not arborvitae, the reality was, our hope was that there was going to be additional work done with the, because I think at that time, the tree board still was willing to work with various people to make this happen and to find the right plantings that would go along the south side, but I don't think just throwing in forty arborvitae on the west side of that is the right answer, but that's my opinion.
That was the recommendation.
Okay, and I appreciate their recommendation, but I don't think that that's the right solution based on those neighbors that had, you know, fifty-year-old oak trees up there. I don't know what the answer is.
Would it hold it up if we approached that subject at a later date as to what trees we can plant in there?
No.
Because I agree, I agree with you, you know, it's like trading Cadillac for a Yugo.
Absolutely.
That's not right.
I think there needs to be some serious consideration and somebody needs to foot the bill for that.
Well, and I would also say though, if we're not going to hold it up tonight, which I disagree with because I know we wouldn't treat other developers the same, then whoever's responsible I think needs to be providing a bond check of some sorts because of goodwill, at this point, there's no goodwill when you've already lied to the council.
Well, it wasn't just the council either, I mean.
Really, that, well, speaks poorly on behalf and against North Polk. So somebody's good faith word that we're going to do this when you've already proven that that's not the case, I don't think is adequate.
Anything else?
Not really, I still don't know how it ever, I mean it's just another classic example of being easier to ask forgiveness than get permission ahead of time.
Bingo.
I mean this was no accident, this was a deliberate act on somebody's part and somebody should have the guts to own up to it and make it right and like you say, not putting inflated Yugos in where there once were Cadillacs.
And whoever's responsible should also be apologizing to the school board and the, you know, Dr. Martin, we, especially the mayor's, went a long ways repairing a lot of issues that was well before my time or anybody else's and it's not right.
I have another concern and that's how close the soccer fields are to those, to the fence line over there and by the drawing, I don't know, I asked that question to P and Z and never got an answer and having been up around the school for over thirty-five years, I know what problem that is with balls going into people's backyards and they're not concerned about the balls, what they are concerned about those kids that are climbing the fence and going to get it and if they are indeed going to be that close, I think there needs to be some preventive measure to keep those balls out of the neighbors' yards.
And I know that was some of the discussion that did happen early on, particularly along the properties on the south side of the property, was trying to come up with some planting along there that would help to shield some of that.
Good.
That doesn't address the west side however.
Yeah, so the outline of the soccer fields is in here as well as the arborvitae, how do we, because again this has to move forward, I would assume that's what you would want, Joe?
No, I want, when we can plant the trees in the spring, that's not, that's not, we got time to figure that out in my opinion, you know, those soccer fields are for what, six-year-olds, the peewees?
There's a full-size field on there, it looks to me like, maybe I'm wrong.
So what action or inaction on our part would be most helpful to you?
If we could.
To ask you a completely unfair question. Sorry.
Yeah, I don't really want to speak to the district because I don't want to pull this up, but I think we got to come up with some idea of what we can do with those, you know, the trees and I think they said to P and Z roughly ten feet, is that somewhere?
Ten feet, where?
I mean the soccer field to the fence?
I think this corner is about ten, ten feet off, this is probably about fifteen feet off.
Joe, enter next meeting.
It's nineteenth, I believe, or the third Thursday.
Twenty-first is the third Thursday.
Is it?
Okay. So we have one more meeting between now and then, would there be enough time for us not to do anything tonight but to take action on the eleventh with some changes to the plan for you then the following Thursday, is that timeline?
Yeah, that's the sound that probably I have to go through Dan too, you know, just get his, you know, say how it works.
Sure.
Because I can't, I'm just a board member, I'm not.
Right.
Are you guys addressing this at your next?
We don't know anything about it, we can't address it, because nobody approached the board, you can't, you can't fix what we don't know, there's not, I bet there's probably, probably Dan Martin, myself are probably the only ones that know, maybe Dave Potter, because nothing's, only been communicated to the board that, hey, we screwed up and again, that still does not sit well.
I see why.
When it's gone, since this happened in what, May, June?
Into May, beginning of June, yeah, I mean they were up there one day and they were gone, I mean it happened that quick.
This is going on three months and nothing has come out from the board saying, hey, we screwed up.
You may have worked with. You've been a pro to the wolves.
Yeah.
Like this and I don't think that's fair, so I don't want to direct this all at you, but you're the one that's here, so you're taking all the bullets, but it doesn't sound like, no.
I don't know that the council should be approving something the board's not seen and approved, I mean, so, you know, I think you should table it tonight and bring it back after the board has had some discussion and approval of what's proposed to them.
Well, we can at least, they can have some discussions and then if they want us to move ahead next time, it's not going to, if their meeting is after our next meeting.
And they've got P and Z's input that they can discuss and go from there.
And this isn't going to hold up construction of the main building at this point, right?
No, but it will hold up in accordance with Jordan's, the certificate of occupancy.
Sure, but we're a ways away from that happening based on driving by tonight.
Yeah, they are in violation, I mean it's a municipal infraction, but that's against the school board and not against architects and engineers, so.
We always schedule a special session till we do it all the time, you know, when things pop up.
Well, our next meeting is the eleventh, take it for what it's worth.
We can provide our recommendations, concerns and they can agree.
I'll, I'll call Dan tomorrow.
Yeah, because you know, we have a new board, our next meeting will have a brand new board, we're losing three members and I would like, you know, I guess I can't just speak for the board.
No, I got.
That's not a knock on the potential three new board members.
We can also, we've sent in the plans and told them we'll present them at the next board meeting, but we can contact them, get it scheduled, you guys want to just schedule a few days before the eleventh?
And I'd be happy to be involved in any of those conversations.
Sure.
On behalf of the city.
Again, I apologize that you're being shot at from us up here, that's not the intention unfortunately, you're the representatives and thankless job tonight, if the school board has obviously not been real well informed at all, same here till after the fact, then how many other moving pieces are there to, I mean, where does the buck stop?
Sure, well, the only really late changes that happened in both the elementary school and middle school project were the site-related things at the elementary school, there's just kind of, the process was just kind of dragged out further because of all the changes all of a sudden at the elementary school, so.
But I mean, can you say then to maybe order to remove all these things and change those things and everything else without?
No.
It just happened, I mean that's, that's what I want to know, I mean that's not you, I get it. I mean, not, it's not you, I get it, that's where my frustration lies.
Understood.
Thank you.
And Kevin, to echo their comments up here, I've heard nothing but praise about you and the job that you've been doing from several people. So this is not directed at you, I want to be clear about that. I've heard good things about you and everything you're doing, so keep up the good work. I know you're hearing a lot of emotions up here. Yeah, so you're doing good. I just back that. So with that being said...
You don't have emotions.
We're going to leave it.
Or we didn't have it brought back.
You going to reach out to Dan tomorrow?
Yes, absolutely.
I'll do the same thing, Joe. I assume you'll follow up with him as well. Okay. Thank you. Thanks.
As you said, I don't want to hold it up, but...
And, and I think that's the...
It's a question on me as a board member, that if I didn't, if I didn't do something or revoice my opinion, if I just said, just let it go willy-nilly, you know, that's, that doesn't sit well, you know, I'm not...
And that's when, why when we started getting these phone calls, that it was imperative that we talk to the right people and get this thing addressed. We realize it's the property of the school, and if they want to take down the trees, and that's what was on the site plan, there's nothing we can do about it.
Yeah.
It's not asking for forgiveness. Okay. Thanks, guys, for coming. We'll see you, guys.
Thank you.
Number three, Whitetail Ridge. Item A, consider motion to approve resolution 2017-89, approving preliminary plat for Whitetail Ridge, plat one. Where's yours?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Chris Bauer, Shive Hattery Engineers, forty-one twenty-five, West Town Parkway, Suite One Hundred, in West Des Moines, Iowa. Also have Jared Ruckel here, who is the land developer, or the landowner and the developer with projects, so... What we're bringing in front of you today are two plats, what we're calling plat one and two of Whitetail Ridge. Mr. Ruckel is in the process of building his primary house, and that we're working on. The initial two plats with the kind of master plan layout, which I believe was included in your packets, was shown on the board there, kind of giving you an overall master plan. So we're very closely with Snyder and P&amp;Z, kind of developing this master plan layout, including the biggest piece there is kind of the future parkway that matches up with the city's comprehensive plan to curb kind of into and eventually across the Big Creek Dam there. So that was kind of a major piece in kind of laying the groundwork with these initial plats, which are mostly developed along Hug Drive, to get that alignment and all that right away, squared away in these, in these preliminary plats, so... That's the biggest piece. I'll go through a few of the items in your report there, so as part of this agreement, we are proceeding with just the developing some of those lots that can be accessed either off of Hug Drive or off of that small cul-de-sac there, with the future development agreement to be put in place prior to the final plating, to agree to future paving of those stub roadways as, as we progress. We're hoping to, to come before you in the next few years with additional plats to kind of fully develop this kind of long-range plan. With that, I believe we've got all the comments addressed from P&amp;Z on the copies of the plats that are in front of you. And Kathleen, anything else? And one other thing is that we do need to revise the approved sanitary sewer water main drawings, which had previously been approved, to extend services up to Mr. Ruckel's house in this development, based on the realignment of the future parkway. We are going to have to draw these lines a little differently, so we'll be coming back in front of you with those amended drawings shortly. Kathleen, anything I missed?
The only thing you may want to point out, the trail and the parkway trees.
Sure, yep. So one of the other things we worked on with P&amp;Z is to make sure we were getting a kind of a continuous trail and sidewalk system out here for phase one, assuming worst-case scenario, no future development proceeded. So the pink is showing the, kind of the proposed ten-foot bike trails and sidewalks. As you can see, as part of the development, we are getting a sidewalk on the south side of Hug Drive there, to extend it up, crossing into the cul-de-sac with a connection through a side yard, access easement over to the future parkway, which then leads that trail up to Big Creek for, for future extension, so... There was quite a few adjustments made to that, to make sure that we had a plan to, to get really good blockability sidewalk system in the development, so... And again, some of those will be part of the development agreement with the future roadway in the future. Anything else, Kathleen?
I don't think, I mean, there will be trees, the, the trail is on the south side of the parkway, and the sidewalk's on the north side of the parkway, and there'll be parkway trees, there's space about forty foot on center along the parkway.
Correct.
And the lots that are developed and sold, those will, the adjacent public improvements would be part of the development agreement, the developer's responsibility to come back and put those in.
Yeah, the intent there is because there'll be some portions before this is realigned, that some of these trees, we say, won't be able to go in immediately, so we kind of worked out that we'll have that all part of that future development agreement, so all those trees go in at the same time and get the same similar size look to that parkway, so that we don't get random trees here and there, so try and go with that uniformity along that future parkway.
There are two outlots, one in plat two and one in plat one, that will ultimately be combined when the intervening right-of-way is vacated and, and Hug Drive is kind of cut off, so that that will become one additional developable lot that will be platted at some point in the future.
And that's probably a good point to point out, Kathleen, is, is this development, what we worked through with P&amp;Z, does account for a portion of Hug Drive to be futurably vacated by the council here as part of future plating when we do that. The intent is to get, once all this is realigned, this Hug Drive will connect further, further to the south and east there, but that allows for a portion of this roadway to be realigned with the new right-of-way dedicated and hopefully the future, or the existing roadway right-of-way to be vacated back to the adjacent property owners. And that's where future plating then will combine that portion with some of the other adjacent outlots that we had set up to create more buildable lots there for the future.
So plat one and two are going at the same time?
Correct, yep. You have plat one and two in front of you.
That first map is one and two?
So we're looking at plat one right here, which includes the cul-de-sac and Mr. Ruckel's house that he's, he's building there, along with two other lots a little further down on Hug Drive. Plat two then is immediately across Hug Drive, so because it's on two separate parcels across the road is why we divide that.
Is that what's on the, the one on the bottom there?
So this does...
That's one and two.
This shows the plat two.
Okay, so that's more than one and two?
Correct, yeah.
Yes.
All, all of this is future plats. I think we're hoping probably, and Jared does have an option on some of Big Creek Valley there with that property, so there's a potential here, depending on how the lot sales go, that we'll be developing some of Big Creek before jumping back and developing additional portions of, of Whitetail Ridge there. That make sense, right, with you?
Ron, I know that there was considerable time spent at P&amp;Z, you know, over a couple meetings about this.
Yeah.
Just wanted to hear any comment.
The questions that I think almost everybody had about this development were answered that night, the sidewalks, the trail, the changing of the road. I don't know who worked through this, but once again, good job.
Yeah. Initially, we were teaming with future parkway in here and having, which was kind of a, a safety traffic thing, that both Snyder and our, our traffic guys were telling us this was an acceptable route. P&amp;Z did not like that option, they really wanted that, that sweeping curve in there to have one less stop on that future parkway, so again, it was something that jointly we worked through with, with P&amp;Z and Snyder and the city staff to come up with a solution. I think everybody's happy with it.
Go ahead. Well, to learn from experience, the only thing that concerns me is the easement, the trail easement that'll be going through two lots. We had that issue at Green Cove, remember, when, we actually had the easement, it wasn't disclosed to the homeowners. And they purchased it, and then we went to put, we went to put trail in it together. So...
Make that very good, yep.
Yeah, they, basically, we, we vacated the easement, which we said we would never do again, because it was somewhat, it was, it was a large issue of access, so I don't... That's really a way to connect those trails, but it would have to be pretty...
Especially if it's constructed in the future, unless, I think we had some additional notes.
That's the issue, yeah. What we've been doing since that point in time is requiring the construction drawings, so the developer installs those short trail segments. I got a Bridge View and a Lost Lakes, and developers in both cases installed the trail, so it was in place before they bought. And this is just a sidewalk, but even still, it could go in at the same time as the cul-de-sac.
I think that's a good idea. People know what they're getting.
Then they know it's there when they buy it at home.
Well, and I think that, I appreciate listening to the P&amp;Z meetings, because as, as we annexed this and as TCI plat six, we have that right, come on, want to make sure that they're a part of the city like everything else is, so I think having these trails is important, and appreciate the, the back and forth to, to get to this spot, and a lot of unknowns with when, but I think this sets us up well for, for those, the Whitetail Ridge plats, whatever, and, and TCI plat six to, to be connected in an appropriate way there.
We talked about parkways and all these other things. The road that, that runs the piers, north and south, at least on the drawing there, that goes by his home?
East and west.
East and west, yeah. Where does that, I mean, right now, it just kind of stops. Where's that, if you were to keep, yeah, following that all the way and keep going, where's that supposed to come out at?
Well, that's, that's part of the city's comprehensive plan, which has long-term to go all the way to thirty-five. I can't, I can't remember the road it eventually winds up with.
It's shown, because a corridor study's not been done in any kind of detail, because it, it does get a bit challenging as you move east, because you've got to cross Wolf Creek, so we want to find an appropriate place to cross that without impacting the existing homes, so, so we will have to take, look fairly close there, but it will go over to North Third Street, and then on to connect to Northwest Hundred Twenty-Sixth Street. So somewhere we're going to have to swing that through, so there's...
We will need to be as diligent with subsequent developments as we were in this one, and make sure that the work done here doesn't go for nothing.
Yeah, because the, the idea with the comprehensive plan was trying to keep traffic off of Hug Drive, because it's obviously not designed to handle traffic as the city continues to grow farther north. So this would become the Collector Street, and folks from the north would be able to get over to North Third, also to Forty-Fourth to the east, as well as on to the interstate, so provides another route there.
Gotcha.
Well, and I think that was the P&amp;Z's main concern about getting this right on the first one, so they could keep it right on the rest of them as they come.
That's, that's a hard prediction for us.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we looked at a number of different options, as you look to the east there, as far as alignments coming across with P&amp;Z, so we did go through a number of different alternatives there, both with Snyder and P&amp;Z, and this is kind of the ultimate decision that everybody made.
Perfect. Any other questions? Take a motion.
Motion to approve resolution 2017-89.
Second.
Roll call.
Lane?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
DeBorak?
Yes.
Mordini?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item B, consider motion to approve resolution 2017-90, approving preliminary plat for Whitetail Ridge, plat two. Take a motion.
So moved. Second.
Further discussion? Roll call please.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
DeBorak?
Yes.
Mordini?
Yes, you can always change it later. Bad joke, sorry.
Really? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Item four, crossroads at the lake, lakes, plural. Item A, consider motion to approve resolution 2017-86, approving the preliminary plat/site plan for crossroads at the lake, plat one.
Aaron? Good evening, Aaron Olindike, with Silver Fine Village, my address thirty-four oh five Southeast Crossroads Drive, with Jean Griggs here tonight. Also is Phil and Jenna Kimberly with Kimberly Development, the owner and developer of the property. As you recall, this, this project is located kind of northeast of the intersection of Third and Bridge Road. This would be the first phase of development, which is the townhomes, sits on just shy of twelve acres. We're proposing thirty-eight townhomes with private streets throughout, and then there would be just over two-acre parcel right along Third Street, that would be for future commercial development. I guess we have addressed all of the city's staff comments. I'd be happy to be answering questions which you might have.
I personally think this is a great first phase, having townhomes in a price range that'll be, you know, we know where our current single-family homes are going for, and I think there's just still to hold that this will fill, moving forward as a first phase.
So with the commercial area inside this, how would that come back to us? So we, we're not approving anything other than residential in, in plat one here, so we would...
There'd be a site plan that would come back before you with the commercial showing elevations and, and how that would get developed. I mean, we're just stubbing utilities to the, to the lot now, but...
The detention is designed to handle it as well.
The detention is designed to do that, yeah.
Would you like to add anything, Mr. Kimberly?
Uh, no, we're excited to get started.
So are we.
It's been a long process.
So are we.
I was going to say, you've been here many times, probably.
Yeah, it, it'll be a good project. We'll sell these out pretty fast.
I do appreciate your comment that you made to P&amp;Z regarding the price point you're trying to hit, and I think that that's going to be beneficial here in the community, so we're looking forward to it, too.
Thank you.
Ron?
If, if anybody wants to, and I did, Mr. Kimberly pointed out to me, I went over to Ankeny and looked at these same buildings he has over there, Ankeny, and I did not find them to waste a bit of fancy.
Nope, I would agree with that comment.
Thank you.
I personally live in one, I think it's a great... It's the only Kimberly product I can afford, but...
That's on record, just...
Already hit me up for a wage.
Just saying. Hey, if you want to move to Polk City, just saying. I know where there's going to be thirty-eight townhomes located. Anything, anything else, or I take a motion on this one?
They did provide revised building elevations that showed the fifteen percent on the, the front facing of all the townhomes, and then on any sidewall that would face either a public or a private street, so...
I know you probably don't have an answer to it, but any idea on the timeframe going ahead, and I mainly ask with the intersection with Bridge and, and Third there, obviously is a, is a big one for us, and, and the work that's already being done via stoplight, and I think this would certainly help that, but that's obviously within your guys' purview aside.
We're going to try to move forward. We need to get the plans out, but we, we're going to try to start this fall right away.
With this, so, so phase?
Phase two.
Phase two, I've given Aaron the go-ahead to start phase two immediately. We think we've got a pretty exciting potential for one of the commercial lots, so we need to get moving on it.
That's on the record, too.
And we are working through all of our necessary things to get our stoplight up there, hopefully early next year. That's on the record, too, so...
Right.
But yeah, so anyway, and we're doing that with the plans of what you've got coming up there, so it's all going to come together very well.
And that'll get us all down the hill and get us some nice single-family lots, too, so...
And offer some more trail connectivity for us.
Right.
Which is exciting for us. Excellent. Did anybody make this motion? Or did, oh wait, I'm sorry, Dan had one more question. Apologize.
Well, I just seem to remember it was subject to paying of, of all the legal fees. Has that been done?
Just review fees.
Review fees. They're all done.
Review fees.
Okay, she said, yep.
Okay.
Okay, motion.[1710.16]
So moved. Second.
Roll call, please.
Sarchet.
Yes.
Wayne.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
DeBorak.
Yes.
Mordini.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item B, consider motion to approve resolution two thousand seventeen eighty-seven, approving the construction drawings for crossroads at the lakes plat one.
So moved. Second.
Quick, roll call, please.
DeBorak.
Yes.
Mordini.
Yes.
Sarchet.
Yes.
Wayne.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much, guys.
Proceed.
Well, go to work.
Good, good. Hard part's done for us. Good luck. We look forward to you guys being in town. Item five, consider motion to approve, approve the donation of speed trailer device to Mitchellville Police Department. Can Nick?
So when I started here, we had, have, still have three speed trailers. I didn't know we had this one, so we started cleaning out the garage to do the building remodel. It was tucked up in the front. It's the, it's the oldest of the three. It does not have any traffic data gathering capabilities, merely just a speed indicator, and it needs some rewiring, it needs to be repowder coated. It doesn't serve any function for us. We have the large one, I'm sure everybody's seen it around town, that does data count, traffic data counts for us. It's put messages on it, it's very, very versatile. And then we also have the smaller one, holds a handcart, that we can deploy in essential areas on terraces and smaller roadways. Those more than encompass what we need for speed trailers. Mitchellville Police Department was trying to find one at a lower cost. I said I would bring it to the council, see about donating if they're willing to spruce it up, how the public works. I think he said do the wiring on it, and they're going to utilize it. So there's a picture of it, it's, it's pretty decrepit, but if they can take it and use it at little cost to them, I thought it would be better than throwing it away.
Since you mentioned the big trailer, I'd like to thank Polk County again for their assistance in helping us get that big trailer, because that was through Polk County that we were able to get some funding on that.
They could have sold it at an auction for slightly even.
Any other questions?
It won't hurt us at all to not have, I mean, it won't be used again. It's been behind public works since we discovered it, Mike allows to store out there, just because...
Oh, so this benefits Mike.
I don't think he knew it was still back there. It was the only thing back there on about two acres, was the old trailer.
Take a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Anderson.
Yes.
DeBorak.
Yes.
Mordini.
Yes.
Sarchet.
Yes.
Wayne.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item six, consider motion to approve quote from Hoy Concrete, the amount of six thousand seven eighty-nine for the Town Square Island project. Mr. Shulte.
Yeah, so in your agenda, you should have had a map in there that we tried to color-code in yellow of where we'd like to replace this concrete. The existing islands now, as we call them, are in the right-of-way. Some of it's, ask, or excuse me, some of it is mulch, some of it is rock, like lava rock in a couple of areas, and some of the areas are just grass, and it doesn't grow very well in those areas. So we'd like to put the colored concrete in there to match the town square, the four-way stop, and then over by the dance studios. And that's what this, this quote is here.
Question for Mike? Motion?
So moved. Second.
Roll call.
Wayne.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
DeBorak.
Yes.
Mordini.
Yes.
Sarchet.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item seven, consider motion to approve quote from Silman Construction, sorry, and Hoy Concrete, the amount of ten thousand nine hundred sixty dollars for additional rock bunkers.
Yes. This you've probably heard of through the budgeting process a few times, and we're finally there, and, you know, as I said in my memo, this is for storing materials out there, it's to keep the product cleaner, it's to stack it higher, save some space, those type of things. And you can see that we, we received a pretty good quote from Silman and Hoy Concrete, and I think what you're seeing there is Silman does walls for a living, that is their niche, and then they have Hoy Concrete do their flat work, where the other contractor just really does flat work, it can, can do the walls, but it's really not their niche. So I think that's why you're seeing a pretty good price difference there, but I was pretty excited about that price, to be honest with you. So that's what the project is, and I'd be asking for approval.
And for you to quit asking for a rock bunker.
You never know what I might store.
Given what time Mike is.
This is much...
I've heard about this rock, I've heard about this rock bunker for a few years, I just think.
This is much appreciated.
Yes. Take a motion.
So moved. Second.
Roll call.
Sarchet.
Yes.
Wayne.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
DeBorak.
Yes.
Mordini.
Yes.
Sarchet.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item seven, mayor's report, under mayor's report, item one, consider council, I'm sorry, schedule council work session for September eleventh, two thousand seventeen, five P.M. for future water needs and solutions in Polk City. Important meeting, I hope you all can be there, five at P.M. Do you have any questions, problems with that? Mike, you'll be there, right?
Right, yeah, this is...
And we're bringing in DeMoin for this one?
Yes.
Right, okay.
Yes.
Okay, so it's not just us, you, you guys make the presentation, DeMoin as well?
It would be DeMoin making the presentation.
Perfect. Excellent.
Nathan, Casey?
Nathan, Casey, yeah, okay, excellent. All right, only other couple things for me is, what, I'm sorry, Ron, I'm sorry, guys, sorry. Sorry.
I just have a comment to make, and that is...
You just lost, you don't have to raise your hand.
Just throw something at me.
Trying to throw, follow, roll call.
Oh, you got it.
I know that our very competent clerk will send out reminders for those members that are old and forgetful. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I didn't mean to offend you.
Only other couple things I have under my report is, again, back to this school thing just real quick, is that, you know, we really have been, and I, and I do pride myself over the last four years, of really trying to rebuild a relationship with North Polk. My relationship with Dan Hart is strong, Dan's relationship with, with me, I think, is strong, relationship with the school board is strong, and to see this sort of thing happen was quite frustrating over the past several weeks as this thing had been going on, and again, I think the big thing with tonight was what to do, you can't replace fifty-year-old oak trees, you know, and so there was some things there, and I'm glad that we took this effort, but, you know, there's just been a lot of work that's gone into rebuilding that relationship with this school, and this just had some egg, and this was kind of personal, so I'm glad that we took that step. The only other thing I just want to mention is that there, I know there's a couple families here in town, particularly one, you're seeing signs all over town, this rally for Ross, Ross Mulbauer, I know that he's heading to Florida on Wednesday for a couple weeks of some treatment, and so I just want to say that on behalf of myself and the city that we wish him and his family the best over the next couple of weeks, and we'll sure be thinking about him. And I really appreciate seeing all the stuff around town for the way this community's come together to support not only that family, but a couple other families I know that are having some tough times, and just very heartwarming in these times to see that happen. Anyway, Dan.
I don't really have much, I haven't been around a lot lately, just got back from Upper Minnesota, visiting my mother-in-law, it was her eighty-fourth birthday last week. Trees up there are already turning and losing leaves, so if that's any indication, it's going to be in early fall. The only other thing I was going to comment on, it's nice to see work has started again on the corner there, maybe he will make it by Four Seasons Fest, he didn't say which year, I guess, but...
Mr. Anderson.
Not a whole lot, just to make a few comments about the P and Z meeting of last Monday and what a thorough job they did on almost every project, and like us, they were very frustrated about the school thing, but didn't, didn't know what else to do, so, I guess, and it was a good meeting, there were some, as usual, there were some different opinions on things, but I think they made some good decisions and they spent a lot of time getting there.
What time did you get out of here that night, Ron?
Ten-twelve, or nine-twelve, excuse me, but I wouldn't count.
Pretty deep, pretty deep agenda that night. Mr. DeBorak.
I'd like to add to your list, not only Ross, but also Charlie Bishop, I think that's probably who you were also moving to, two young kids that are both in, and families is a lot, I mean, they're, they're all going through some difficult times, he has cancer as well. Also, I believe the theme of tonight is, we need to have a short-term and a long-term memory on who to work with moving forward, and, you know...
So moved.
We have, we do have the option, well, hopefully have the option, but you work so hard, it, it takes how long to build something, and only one incident to, to tear it down, so we need to make sure that we don't put ourselves in that position again with certain firms, however that can be done, I'm not sure, but we have to be very cognizant of that moving forward, and it's, it's just hardening at deepest levels, so I think that speaks for itself, that's all we have.
Agreed. Mr. Mordini.
I, I'd echo everything that was said, when I first ran for council a few years ago, the school was one of the number-one issues then, for reasons well before my time, I mean, no question about that, but those have definitely reached a boiling point, and finally, after I'm not sure how many years, we were getting to where it was, and, and I hope that's true, that as school board member mentioned tonight, that the school was just as surprised as we were, and if that's the case, I, I hope they take action.
Sarchet.
Just two quick things, so I want to thank the Chamber and PCDC combination group for the sounds on the square, the last one on Friday night, that was another cool event down at the square, and like seeing the number of people, I don't know if they took an official count, but it was pretty full and a perfect night, and another good opportunity to use the, the square. And then just continue to read some articles on the local option sales tax vote in Dallas County, and honestly, a little surprised with transparency and what that means for Polk County as well, so, or Dallas County to Polk County, so nothing to do, yeah, monitor, but could be impactful to us.
Other comment on the school board is, September fifth, if you didn't see, there will be, I asked our chamber, and we'll be hosting it, a meet the candidates night for the school board members, it'll be over in the community center, I'm sorry, candidates, I'm sorry, school board candidates, thank you, and I believe at seven-thirty, seven o'clock, I don't remember, seven o'clock, seven o'clock, seven o'clock on the fifth, but if anybody's available, wants to go over there, it will be a, they will be given three minutes, questions, sort of a scenario, so encourage anybody who's available to go over that. Go ahead.
Just to echo that, and I know it's been mentioned before, but it was refreshing to see a, a school member here tonight, so.
Yep, appreciate that. Absolutely. City minister's report.
Two things, our purchase capacity is complete, we have given our funds to Berwick, and we are now the proud owner of an extra two hundred and fifty thousand gallons. Also, Gary got notified that Granger is pulling out of DART, and he wanted you guys to know that.
Along the lines of DART, Mr. Walters and myself did meet with Elizabeth Perzuti from DART, we had a meeting with her this last week, and kind of reviewed some various topics, and more to come on that, so Jeff, I still appreciate your contributions on that. Attorney's report.
Nothing here.
Engineers' report. Public Works' report.
Just the work session before next meeting, that's the, that's the plan we've been working on, the study we've been working on, it was almost ready in January, and it's taken this long because of other situations with DeMoin Water Works to get here, but this is going to, you know, pretty much talk to our future in the water, so as you can tell, I'm probably pretty excited about it, I think you guys will be too after the meeting. I'm trying to get you there, so it, it will be a very exciting conversation, though, to have them here and giving that presentation.
Looking forward to it. Technology and Innovation Report. Daniel gets to actually come and speak to us tonight.
For those of you that have never heard my voice, I'm shocked. So just pretty briefly, I won't get too into the technical side of things, but...
Thank you.
Yeah, just cover your ears if it starts there.
I'm already going on.
And so we are moving to GIS online for our platform, for all of our GIS information, so we'll be utilizing that platform, it's already covered in our current licensing, there won't be any additional software costs or anything like that, and the main benefits that we'll see is it's so much easier to get that actual information that we have and that we need out to the people that can utilize it. For example, Mike's guys in the field, if they need a map of something, they won't necessarily need a big paper map, they can get on their already existing work phone, a tablet that we get in the future, if it ends up working out well, it's pretty limitless for all that possibility, and in that comes, it's extremely easy to build out web apps to where we can throw it on our website, things like the city of Ames, for example, does whenever they do hydrant flushing, they have their map, so just kind of stuff like that to keep in mind. It's a lot easier to really reach the people that need the data and the people that don't work in GIS, so I think that'll be a, a really nice benefit that we'll start to see as we get more into it, and it's kind of something to keep in mind, and if anybody has any ideas or things that they think that we could utilize that for going forward, I'm sure that we'll be talking more, and you can send me an email or...
Ron will probably set up a meeting with you tomorrow morning at eight o'clock.
Someone has to set up the service. But yeah, that's just something to, to keep in mind, there'll be a cost savings there for, we won't need to get laptops in every truck to just get the data to the guys, right now, we don't really have too many systems that we would really benefit from seeing, so those should be easier to defer that until later, once we can kind of do more of an all-in-one solution, and we won't buy technology now that, three years from now, once we go to something else, you know, we have to rebuy it anyway, so that, and the actual data collection side of things, instead of fifteen thousand dollar equipment, it's a two thousand dollar little Bluetooth antenna and a smartphone, and then you're accurate within three feet, wind's bad, probably about five feet, and Snyder was nice enough to help sit me down and go over everything with us, so we got their recommendations on it also, and we're going to utilize them for just making sure that we have a good solid start and aren't playing catch-up for any stuff that's not on the map, so it'll be a good benefit.
Excellent. Nice work.
Thank you.
Yep. Finance?
Our annual audit is coming up, our auditors will be in the office September twenty-fifth through the twenty-seventh, they will be here in City Hall, pretty much the entire day is there.
Refresh my memory, is it a new firm this year?
It's the same firm this year.
Same firm? So we can expect to see the same old BS in it?
Yeah. But I'm hoping for half the BS this time.
Yeah, it will, and it should be new BS.
Moving on. Fire Department report.
Police Department report.
A couple quick things, we had the state auditors go through our police association books, they're done with that, we were clear to restart the association, I took new articles of corporation and secretary of state, and they were accepted on Friday, so we incorporated a proper nonprofit group at the state, the process of developing new bylaws, elect, we've elected officers within the association, and then we'll get our nonprofit staff, IRS, finished up in the next week, and so it'll all be legal and above board, and then the treasurer of the association will also meet with Lindsay annually, probably right before our audit, I'm guessing, and I'll leave it up to Lindsay, so we have transparency in a second level, checking that, and then we'll also submit anything the auditors want through the city, even though it's not a city entity, it's a separate nonprofit, but it'll be double indemnified against, or above reproach in that way, we'll be very transparent, and we look forward to, there's some funds in there to use in that, the, the mission of the association and the, and the bylaws is to benefit the police department and the public it serves,